Good evening. The Board now reconvenes this meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 7:11 PM on December 12, 2017 at the Plano ISD Administration Building. I'm Ms. E. Bender, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals: ensure the continued improvement in student learning and ensure the efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Sarah Bonzer, Interim Superintendent; Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary; and Trustee Tammy Richards. Seated to my right are Board Vice President David Staley; Trustee Yoram Solomon and Trustee -- sorry, Trustee Dr. Yoram Solomon and Trustee Angela Powell; and Executive Assistant to Superintendent Board of Trustees Denise Gillespie. This evening, I'd like to offer a brief inspirational message. During the upcoming break, I ask that, in this loveliest of seasons, we let the spirit of peace on earth and goodwill gently fill our hearts. Join me in cherishing each moment of 2017 and welcome fresh the year 2018 as a community focused on children and their future. We are excited to welcome our student greeters this evening. They will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And these students are finalists in our Holiday Greeting Card Contest. Students, would you please come to the front of the room at this time? Okay. Will everyone please stand for the pledge and our students will lead us?
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated and join me in applauding these students.[145.69][145.69](Applause) Students, we will be calling you again in just a few minutes to recognize your accomplishments and to take your photos. Annually, at the last regular Board meeting of the calendar year -- can you hear me okay? No? Okay. Can you hear me now?[171.31][171.31](Laughter) It just doesn't move in my direction. I'm sorry. I'm trying. Annually, at the last regular Board meeting of the calendar year, the President of each local Board of Trustees announces the name of each Board Member who has completed the required continuing education, who has exceeded the required hours of continuing education, and who is deficient in the required continuing education as of the date of the meeting. Completing the annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting Board Member under state Board of Education rule. I'm happy to announce that all trustees have met the required hours of continuing education. Thank you for allowing me to share this required statement with you. And now, we move to the recognition part of the agenda. The first section is related to recognizing the accomplishments of our students. Carla Oliver, the Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives, is made aware of student guests prior to the meeting. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, President Bender. We do have one student who is receiving Boy Scout Troop 219. I'm going to say that again.
Let's try that again.[244.37][244.37](Laughter)
Yeah, they deserved better than that, didn't they? We do have one group this evening to be recognized, and that is Boy Scout Troop 219. If you would please stand.[260.64][260.64](Applause)
Thank you for joining us. The Board is also proud to recognize the Speech and Debate Teams of Clark High School, Jasper High School with two teams, and Plano West Senior High on reaching the Top 64 in the Brewer Foundation International Public Policy Forum Competition, also known as IPPF. In front of us, I think shortly, we will see a PowerPoint, or maybe it was previous to us arriving here, that included the names of the students within these organizations. The IPPF competition received essays from 17 countries and 30 U.S. states. Reaching the Top 64 in this international competition is quite a feat. These teams have qualified to continue in single-elimination competition to the next level, and we wish them luck. Congratulations to these students for their outstanding achievement.[320.02][320.02](Applause) We would also like to recognize Plano Senior High School FFA, who placed at the State Leadership Development Events Contest among more than 600 competing teams and individuals. Let's congratulate them, too.[337.62][337.62](Applause) And now, I invite Ms. Oliver to introduce a special student recognition for this evening. It is the 2017 Plano ISD Holiday Greeting Card Art Contest Finalist Presentation. This contest was open to all students in the district. Board Secretary Nancy Humphrey will present the certificates. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, President Bender. I will say, as you said, it's the loveliest season when we have the opportunity to look at all of those student art entries. And so, at this time, I would like to invite Laura Grunler to come forward, our District Arts Coordinator, and she was going -- she's going to walk through all of the winners and tell you a little bit of something about each of them. Thank you, Ms. Grunler.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. I feel like that's kind of low. They -- oh, yeah. Let's have the students walk forward first.[392.12][392.12](Laughter) Oh, my gosh.[403.12][403.12](Laughter) Love seeing them all here. The Plano ISD Annual Holiday Greeting Card Contest has been a longstanding tradition in the district for many years. Thank you to the Plano ISD Education Foundation for sponsoring this year's contest. Almost 1,000 Plano ISD students participated in this event from pre-K to 12th grade. They all entered original artwork reflecting this year's theme, "Unfold the Season." From these many beautiful entries, four finalists were selected by a panel of judges, and from these four finalists, a winner was named. Each finalist will receive a $50 award from the Education Foundation, and the winner will receive a $100 award. The winning artwork is the cover of the art for the 2017 Plano ISD Education Foundation Holiday Greeting Card. And I heard somewhere tonight that over 4,000 of those cards were sent out, so that's pretty exciting for our winner. And three additional artworks of the finalists are printed on the back of the card. Now, let's see our winner and finalists -- or let's meet our winner and finalist. Students, when I call your name, hand your artwork to your teacher, and please join us at the podium for your award. Our three finalists are Brandon Montamoros, pre-K from Weatherford Elementary School.[488.12][488.12](Applause)
Parents, if you want to take pictures, feel free to move about so you can get a good picture.[502.12][502.12](Laughter)
Hannah Wyeth, 5th grade from Shell Elementary School.[513.84][513.84](Applause) Amanda He, 11th grade from Plano West Senior High.[525.54][525.54](Applause) And our winner is Sarah Kamal, 8th grade, Robinson Middle School.[538.04][538.04](Applause) Thank you all for participating, and one more big round of applause. These were amazing works of art.[551.66][551.66](Applause)
Students, before you leave, I'd like to invite your parents and any other teachers that might have been here to support you to please stand so we can recognize you, too.[567.12][567.12](Applause) Board members, do you have any comments you want to share before the students, teachers, and family members leave for pictures?
We're just terribly proud of you and the commitment that you made to being great students, and so it's so wonderful to see the ages from pre-K all the way to senior high. So, way to go.[593.66][593.66](Applause)
Students, families, and teachers, you may now exit the lobby for photos, and after this, you're free to leave and continue your busy evening. We also have two very special staff recognitions this evening as well, and I'm proud to say they're also related to the visual arts. Kathy Cuddas, Director of Fine Arts and Special Academic Programs, is here this evening to introduce Matt and Laura Grunler and the awards they have received from the Texas Art Education Association. Board Secretary Nancy Humphrey will present these certificates.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. I'm so pleased to be able to share with you the state-level recognitions of two of our outstanding art education leaders. The Texas Art Education Association annually recognizes organizational members in a variety of roles who have significantly contributed to the association and to art education on the state, local, and/or national levels. And this year, our own Visual Art Coordinator, Laura Grunler, received the Outstanding Administrator Award for her work just four years after accepting her post with Plano ISD. Laura is a passionate leader and advocate for arts education here within the district. She is quick to partner with arts and business organizations within our community and has been an active leader in Region 10 North Visual Arts Scholastic Event and is a contributor and planner for the TAEA Annual Conference. Visual arts educators often live on an island of isolation on their campus without other teachers who teach their subject, share their passion, and understand their challenges. And so, just over three years ago, Laura and her husband Matt, who is the art specialist at Brinker Elementary School, started a small weekly Twitter chat for their colleagues. What began as a dozen or so Plano art teachers chatting from their home couches every Thursday evening is now a weekly event on Twitter with more than 5,000 global followers and guest hosts that include studio artists, authors, illustrators, and innovative educators. Known to the Twittersphere as Team Grunler, Matt and Laura received the second-ever Lone Star Art Advocate Award from TAEA for their work providing a platform for learning and collaboration amongst arts educators. I can't emphasize how proud we are as a department of them and the work they do every day on behalf of building creative, artistic, and well-rounded students.
Congratulations, Laura. Administration Division of the Division of the Arts. And wait a minute.[815.12][815.12](Laughter) So, this is awesome. Texas Art Association -- Education Association's Lone Star Advocate Award. And I believe you all share that.[825.23][825.23](Laughter) So, again, for Matthew, the Texas Art Education Association's Lone Star Advocate Award. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you so much for the work you do. Thank you.[838.12][838.12](Applause)
So, Matt and Laura, it is the Board's pleasure to recognize both of you as recipients of the TAEA Lone Star Art Advocates. And in addition, Laura Grunler has received a second award as the 2017 Outstanding Art Educator Supervision Administration Division. Congratulations.
Thank you. You did very well.
I'd just like to chime in. On behalf of the district, Laura and Matt, you know, I've known you for a long, long time, but I know how much of your heart and soul you put into art education, and you are leaders among leaders. And you make everyone in the district proud, and the kids and the teachers and the parents who were here just a moment ago are the beneficiaries of all of your passion and support of the arts. So, thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do.
Would you guys like to share any remarks?
Yeah.[897.82][897.82](Laughter)
Step over to the podium.
As Sarah said, we've known each other a long time. I've been in the district 16 years, and Matt's right behind me at 14 years, and we couldn't be more proud to work in this district. We live in the district, our children go to schools here, and just as much as we're passionate about the arts, we're passionate about Plano ISD, and we appreciate everything you do to support us.
Colleagues, do you have any words you want to share? Okay, at this time, sorry, Nancy?
Well, I was going to say, I've run into these two quite a bit.[941.62][941.62](Laughter) And I know how hard they work and the support they give to the students, but I love that you started the Twitter chat with other administrators, or staff members. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I think we're going to give you another round of applause, and then I think we're going to take a picture together.
Okay.
So, Debbie, after we do this, just let us know how you want us to get positioned for a picture. So, congratulations to the Grunlers.[971.82][971.82](Applause)
Do you want to get closer to him?
Yeah. Do you want us to -- If you didn't get a chance to see all of the great artwork, it's posted out in the lobby, so you can see that on the way out. We now have the introduction of public comments. We now move to the public -- regular public comment portion of our agenda. For the public comment portion of the agenda, the Board has public comment cards that are accepted from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Cards are not accepted after 7:00 PM and are not transferable to other parties or speakers. All cards were collected and given to Carla Oliver or a representative of the Communications Department, who will present to speakers during this time. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Yes, we do have one card. It is for a non-agenda topic.
All right. So, the non-agenda topic comes at the end of the meeting. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and read some language in preparation for the comment that will come at the end. So, give me just a minute to get through this. Pursuant to Board Policies BED Legal, BED Local, and BED Exhibit, the Board may place reasonable restraints on the number, length, and frequency of presentations, so long as it does not unfairly discriminate among speakers based on their viewpoint. The Board is not authorized to discuss or act on the public's comments or complaints if the subject is not on the agenda. If a member of the public or the Board inquires about a subject for which notice has not been given, the Board may only do the following: make a statement of specific factual information, recite existing policy in response to the inquiry, or refer the person to a staff member for more information or assistance. If the subject of the public comment is already on the agenda for the meeting, the Board may invite the speaker to stay until the Board reaches that topic on the agenda. Thirty minutes in total have been allotted to hear persons who desire to make comments to the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall complete the appropriate public comment form before the meeting begins and indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. If you are not finished speaking at the end of your three minutes, I or the Secretary will interrupt you so that we can move to the next person. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. And finally, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821, the Board will not permit the presentation of personally identifiable information regarding a student and will not discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Should a speaker wish to address one of these issues, they must do so through the appropriate local grievance policies, which are FNG Local, DGBA Local, or GF Local. So, at the conclusion of the meeting, I won't have to read that again, now that we've read that. So, at this moment, we are now moving forward to the consent agenda of this meeting. This includes personnel recommendations, minutes of previous meetings, bids, purchases, and construction items. Are there any requests to remove an item or items from the consent agenda for further discussion?
President Bender, I'd like to lift Item 7H from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. So, oh, go ahead.
And I would like to add Item 7K.
All right. So, let us make Item 7H related to news course recommendations. We will now move that to the action and discussion part of the agenda, which will come back as 8B. Item 7K related to the waiver of a particular student will come back later on the agenda in Section 8, Item C. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the agenda, the consent agenda, as it was presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. With the approval of the consent agenda, I now call on Ms. Sarah Bonzer, Interim Superintendent, to introduce the announcement of an administrative appointment.
Thank you, President Bender. At this time, with the approval of the consent agenda, I'd like to ask Dr. Katrina Hasley to share the appointment of a new leader on her academic services team.
Thank you, Ms. Bonzer and Board. It is my privilege and pleasure to introduce to you Tali Gomez, who is our new Executive Director of Multilingual Services. Tali, stand up, please. And she's a familiar face. You know her.[1332.04][1332.04](Applause) Ms. Gomez has a great deal of experience in language acquisition as a bilingual teacher, serving on bilingual and dual-language campuses, also as a district specialist sponsoring campuses with those programs. She's been a campus administrator for 10 years. As you know, she is our current Principal of Foreman Elementary, which is one of our bilingual campuses. We're excited to have Tali join the district leadership in this capacity, but I want to assure the Board and the community and staff at Foreman Elementary that we have a plan in place to continue to support their leadership. Tali will only transfer partially to the new role for the spring, and we have a plan in place to continue the leadership there so they can finish strong, and then she'll assume full responsibilities at the end of the school year for the role. So, Tali, would you like to introduce your guest?
Tali, we're so excited to welcome you to the administrative team of this building, and, you know, we're thankful that you'll seek Foreman through the end of the school year and take care of the kids and families there, but, boy, I know Dr. Hasley's excited to get you over here, and so is the multilingual team, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, and I'm sure they would like to take your picture in the lobby.[1413.12][1413.12](Laughter) Okay, now we move to Item 8, Items for Discussion and Action. The first item related -- Item A is a culture voting resolution. The Board is reconsidering this item as a result of an administrative posting error on the November 28 meeting. The same content that was posted at that meeting has now been posted correctly for this meeting in the correct category for action. Since that time, a trustee has requested additional edits. The edits have been attorney-reviewed, and policy references have been added. Therefore, you have received the original resolution, which I will refer to as A, in your board packet, and you've also received the modified resolution, which is attorney reviewed, and I'll call that Item B. Ms. Oliver will introduce the discussion regarding the adoption of a resolution to support a voting culture in Plano ISD. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, President Bender. Of course, to reiterate what Ms. Bender mentioned, this is your second opportunity to consider this voter resolution. It has -- it's gone through a couple of iterations, and so you have reposted what we had at our last meeting for continued review, and then some proposed changes in front of you. So, I know that all of you have those, and I stand ready to assist you, or really just defer to the conversation back to you as trustees to consider what your wishes are for that, but I'm here to help.
Okay. So, why don't we entertain some discussion first, and then, following the conclusion of discussion, I will entertain a motion. So, a discussion related to this topic?
You don't want to start with a motion? Up to you.
Why don't we just have some conversation first and then entertain whatever -- when we're concluded with that, then we'll entertain a motion.
So, I'll start because I proposed Item B. And the difference between Item A, which was proposed last Board Work Session, and this item is that I added a section that said that the Board of Trustees -- the first Item 2 says that the Board of Trustees authorize the administration to take steps necessary to ensure my participation, and it says that the actions may include -- I removed the last item, the prohibiting negative consequences, and added Item 3 that says that the Board will prohibit. So, these are all the areas of prohibitions. And the first one is influencing employees or students how to vote, not if to vote or not. That's the whole purpose of the resolution. The second one is we'll prohibit violating the employee or student's rights to maintain confidentiality of his or her vote. So, we're not going -- nobody is allowed to ask them how they voted. And the third one was the one that we had over there as the fourth before. We'll prohibit any negative consequences against an employee or a student for voting or abstaining from voting, or for voting for or against any issue or candidate. So, those were the changes that I made for what you call Item B.
Okay. Discussion? Other comments?
Well, I believe that the difference between A and B, I think B is a bit more clearer to teachers and the students than the first A.
So, I -- look, I kind of think we're tinkering a little bit too much with this thing. When this original resolution came to us, it had eight or nine items, and if you'll recall, we said, "This is all superfluous. One and two are the only ones that we really need. They're the only ones that matter." And so, we backed it out to one and two. I think adding in language now that saying that the Board and the administration will prohibit items that already violate policy or law is, again, superfluous. I mean, I don't think we need additional language, quite frankly.
So, let me just add a couple of things. I went through the policies that are listed there. Policy BBBB legal, DGA legal, and DGA local, they were referenced in the context of influencing employees. When I go through BBBB, it really talks about spending, not influencing. So, we're not allowed to spend money to influence. It says nothing about influencing without spending money. BBB legal, I'm still there. Again, the last part, I don't think is relevant because it talks about a candidate cannot influence a district, but not the district. DGA local talks about requirement or coercion, and we're not talking about that. I'm really proposing not to influence. Finally, the Election Code 276.001 talks about retaliation. So, this does talk about retaliation. It also identified that retaliation as a felony of the third degree. I checked, and it carries a jail time of two to 10 years. So, while I understand that -- first of all, again, the first two are not really covered through those references, not to the extent that we don't influence and that there's not going to be any violation of the right for confidentiality. The third one is covered by the Texas Education Code 276.001. But that brings a point that we have about, I don't know, Carla, I asked you before, I think about 1,300, 1,500 pages of policies, our Board policies. Can we expect all the employees to know everything there so that they don't violate that? Furthermore, can we expect that all the employees know our election code? I see this, that the reason I want to add this is because this falls into an area that our employees have -- our employees have not traditionally been involved with, but those are areas that carry severe consequences such as two to 10 years in jail if you violate, for example, the retaliation. My point in adding those is to protect our employees and make sure that our employees are aware of those things and don't make mistakes that will cost them dearly, and we will be able to hide behind, "Well, we had policies, and there's the election code." That's, that's the reason. It's for clarifying, it's to protect our employees from making mistakes, costly mistakes. I'd like to make a motion.
I have a question first.
Okay, sure.
So, Ms. Bonzer, in the, you know, operational implementation of policy and so forth, if, if an infraction is known and reported, what would happen in terms of process? So if someone said, "Hey, I feel uncomfortable about," you know, "Someone asked me a question that I don't think they were supposed to ask me," and then if, what happens at that point?
We conduct an investigation, and we take appropriate actions. I mean, it depends on the situation and what they're saying, but we, we have had situations occur where we've had to conduct an investigation. So that's what we would do, and we would take appropriate actions.
Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adopt Item B, the modified one, as the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay. I will now call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. All opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, so with a 3-3, the motion does not pass.
And that's why we need another board member.
I'll move that we pass A.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we now will move to Item 8B. So B and C are going to be items that were previously pulled from consent agenda that we are now bringing forward for additional discussion. Item 8B is related to new course recommendations for 2018 and 19. Let's see. Tammy, you pulled this one? Is that right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, would you like to have a few comments?
I think in particular, I just wanted to have a discussion at the board table and with the administration about the new courses, in particular, the courses surrounding dual credit. That's been an intense interest of mine, and I wanted to make sure that we could actually discuss that here. I did have a concern about particularly college algebra as a choice for dual credit, because historically, college algebra doesn't take the place of math course on a student's degree plan. For example, an engineering student will receive no credit for having taken college algebra. A business student, from Texas A&amp;M, no credit. And an elementary education teacher will receive no credit. So I just want to ensure that we're not miscommunicating to our students and our parents. That's, of course, it won't save the child any time, and it won't save the child any money. And so I just wanted to have a richer discussion about that.
Ms. Bonzer?
Sure. Thank you. I know there were several questions that came up from several board members about the course recommendations and dual credit, and so we appreciate you having the interest in new courses that are being considered. So I've asked Dr. Hasley to have some of her team available this evening to answer questions. One or two members of that committee that were leading that work were unable to be here this evening, and so we'll try to answer as many questions as we can, and then if there are unanswered questions, we'll be glad to follow up with the board with further information. I would want to let you know that the course catalogs are on hold for print pending your approval or lack of approval of courses, and so those are scheduled to go to the printer this week. And so we just, you know, would ask that the board consider taking action tonight, and then if there's any follow-up information, we're glad to do that as well.
I'm not opposed to taking action, but if this was going to be my dual-credit conversation, I felt a little cheated. And so I want to make sure that we really cover that in richer detail, because I'm very hopeful that as the board and administration, we will support helping Plano students graduate with 30 credit hours that will apply to a degree plan. And I think there's a, there's a handful of degree plans that we could analyze. We could look, there are, you know, four or five majors that when you ask a junior or senior, they're probably going to say they're going to major in that, whether it's education, business, engineering, liberal arts, medicine. Medicine comes up a lot. And so I think it would be important for us to look at what the universities that we send our kids to require in those degrees. And later in the report, we're going to talk about the universities our kids go to. It's UTD, Texas A&amp;M, UT, and UNT. And so it would only be about 20 degree plans that we would need to understand, so we can see what sort of matriculation agreements they may have between Collin College, our community college, and those universities. And so I historically had an issue with college algebra. I would have, when I was associating in SMU, I'd have parents come to me quite proudly and say, "Oh, my son has taken college algebra, and I can't wait for him to enroll." And I'd have to say, "I'm so happy your student pushed himself," but unfortunately, that doesn't check off any box on his degree plan, either in mathematics or in electives. And I just want to make sure we're very frank with our families.
So I'm going to ask Dr. Hasley and her staff to, to chime in and provide some information regarding the questions.
Sure, sure. A few other questions came up as well as the dual-credit question about the procedures we follow and the committee work, the committee that works together, so I'll share a little bit of that, and then I have a couple of staff members here who can speak to describing a couple of the classes that were listed on the proposal. The new course selection process is housed in the secondary academics department, and the committee is facilitated by Susan Hayes, our coordinator of special assignments. The review committee is made up of both campus and central office administrators, the three senior high school associate principals in charge of curriculum, serve on the committee annually, and then we rotate three high school principals as well, the 9, 10 campuses. Susan Monset, our assistant principal of campus services, and myself of academic services serve on the committee, as well as executive directors, directors, and managers from academic services, campus services, HR, instructional technology, guidance and family education services, financial services, and student records. So we try to have every perspective around the table to think about what needs to, to occur. The process is the procedures and the proposal form are sent out at the beginning of the year to campus principals, and they're asked to forward those to department chairs and teachers. It's also sent to the coordinators. So really, any teacher, administrator, coordinator has the eligibility to propose a course. From there, they're sent to the committee, and then Susan Hayes coordinates the meeting and provides a time for each person presenting a proposal to present to the committee, and those are due in October. We meet October through November and plan to propose the courses to the board in December. The things that the committee considers with each proposal are the student curricular and campus-level course needs, the alignment to the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, graduation requirements, scheduling options, student enrollment predictions, what implications that might have for staffing, any special technology requirements provided for the course, facility requirements, whatever special certifications or staff development are needed, and then what budget impacts would there be. All of those things are considered in the decisions. So at this time, I do have Patty Berry, who's our coordinator of family and consumer science courses, and she will give a little description for you about the family and community services course we're proposing.
It's my pleasure to tell you a little bit about family and community services and kind of why we feel like it's important. The Human Services Career Cluster is the one that this falls under, and it's designed to involve students in realistic and meaningful, community-based activities through volunteerism and service-learning type of experiences. Students are going to be provided these opportunities with families and individuals as well as various organizations throughout the community. The emphasis will be placed on developing and enhancing organizational and leadership skills and characteristics as they experience the volunteerism. And we believe that teaching through the service-learning projects enables our students to become more knowledgeable in the actual needs of the community and the resources that are available. And the curriculum will focus on conducting profound research into the demographics, economic status, and trends regarding individuals, families, and resources, and community outreach. So we believe that this is going to be then utilized through research and organizing and executing the needful service projects. In other words, not only will they research what's needed, but then they would carry that out and therefore learn even more about organizations and nonprofits, and how to make all this happen, how to set goals, and see it through to the end. We would also hope that they would be involved in the CTSO that is associated with this class, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, and they would then hopefully have the opportunity and want to get involved in leadership and competitions that are also related to the same family and community area within that.
So where do we get the curriculum for that? Who develops?
Well, we would, we've set aside some funds for our district to develop the curriculum, particularly for Plano, but TEA has set out guidelines. There is a scope and sequence for the curriculum as well as essential knowledge and skills. I'm not sure what all y'all have in front of you, but there is a scope and sequence in the proposal, which is actually the last three pages of the packet, but it basically gets into employer expectations and the human services career path, and then goes into actual leadership skills for that student, and then careers in family and community service, and then organizational and leadership skills, and they have it divided into four units, and then the actual coordinating service learning activities.
The packet she's referring to is what was presented to the committee for the proposal, so I'll be glad to share that.
Okay, I was looking at our packets.
Yes, like I say, I'm not sure what you have, but I can provide you with any of this information you'd like.
And I think it would be in the future interesting for us to know when the new classes, new course is being proposed. Does that course include going out to work with organizations?
Yes, they would actually meet a class period and study all of these things, the knowledge part of it, and then they would have that time to actually implement the projects that they come up with and decide are needful. And we feel like that is a real critical part of it, because they're not just experiencing, but they're being taught how to do all of this and what all's there, and, you know.
And do we provide any transportation to take them there, or do we rely on self-transportation?
Most of it would probably be self-transportation, but that's not to say we can't get school vans and do that as well. It depends on the size of the group of the students. But if they can fit in a school van, and we get all the paperwork done, we can certainly transport them that way.
Okay, I'm aware of some of our classes that do require practicum outside in the field, but they do rely on self-transportation, and so those who can't would not take that class.
That's a very good point, and that's one of the things that we really like about this course, though, is that it gives them that opportunity to do it, whether or not they can get offsite. They can still be involved in the planning of it, and to some extent, the execution of it, and hopefully they could come up with opportunities that they could get to, if that makes sense. And they can also do things around the campus. For example, I know that FCCLA this year at Plano Senior High is working with the hearing-impaired program that's there on campus, and they are very active in that, so it could be that some of those students that didn't have transportation could be more actively involved in that project. But we hope to include all.
Yep. It would be good to take a look at that and see.
It's geared for 11, 12, so typically the students by that age.
Not all of them.
Well, but they can work on campus.
I don't want to put that bar and say if you don't have a car, you don't have a way to transport yourself, you can't take that class. That's an important class.
No, and we're not saying that it's.
And it's more than just this class.
Correct. And we're not saying that it's required like it is in the practicum and some of the others, because there will be other ways for them to do it.
Okay.
So any other questions for Ms. Berry? Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Other classes include Musical Theater 2, Yoga, a personal favorite, and American Principles. Any questions about these?
I wanted to know what American Principles is.
Ms. Teresa Biggs, our director for advanced academics, is here to share with you that description.
We're excited about this one. American Principles is, right now, our gifted education. We have a K through 11 fully articulated continuum. What we're lacking is a 12th grade course, so this is our answer to that 12th grade gap. And just really quickly, I'll read the most recent description. "American Principles is the senior year offering for students receiving gifted services and/or high-achieving students seeking an integrated learning experience. This course combines AP Economics, AP Government, and the Humanities. Although the first semester will focus on government and the second semester on economics, both subject areas will be referred to throughout the year. The elements, excuse me, the elements of the Humanities will be considered as both a citizenry's response to and a catalyst for governmental and economic decisions and public policy." And then, of course, students would choose to sit for the AP exam at the end of the course. And the way the course would be designed, it would pick up, in middle school and sixth grade, we begin laying the humanities elements over our gifted social studies course, then ninth and 10th grade, that combined English social studies offering. So we're picking up that secondary thread and pulling it all the way through the senior year, so it rounds out really nicely the gifted experience the kids are currently enjoying.
So I would just want to comment, especially in a class like this, when you start getting into politics, you need to be very sensitive. We have a policy, EMB Local, that makes sure that everything is taught in an unbiased way, so that just make sure that that's maintained.
I can tell you, I'm very familiar with that, and it is forwarded and shared on a regular basis. We will be very, very careful about that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not on those.
Thank you.
Okay, the other category is in the dual-credit courses, and Tammy, this is one that you mentioned, wondering about college algebra, the value of that. Is that something that we're going to pull forward?
I don't think I'll be able to fully answer your question. I did visit with our math coordinator before, but she was not able to be here this evening. But the intent for that is to give both college algebra and pre-calculus credit, but I understand your question that it might not fit and give opportunities for students who are on certain degree plans, so I'll be glad to gather more information on that, and we are happy to bring a dual-credit conversation to a work session if that's what you'd like to do. I do have Jana Hancock here, our director of guidance, who is, she may be able to answer a question or two on dual credit, and there is also a question on the Learning Framework course, and she'll be happy to give a description of that one.
Good evening. I'm actually researching this as we speak, looking into some core curriculum requirements. The algebra, or college algebra course is a part of the core curriculum that the state of Texas has adopted. So you're probably familiar with this. Basically, a student that's taking an English class at Collin College is covering the same content that's being covered at Texas Tech out in Lubbock. So the student is guaranteed that that course is transferable. So we'll be happy to investigate that further, but right now, I can't tell you that the college algebra course is part of that core curriculum, and in most cases, it will complete that math requirement, but we certainly want to look into that to be sure. As far as the learning frameworks goes.
Let me just interject before we leave college algebra. There are at least three degree plan, elementary education, business, and engineering, three biggies at Texas A&amp;M, that would not accept that college algebra or math credit. The first class in the sequence for the elementary education and the business is a program math course called Findet Mathematics, which seems to be amalgamation of a lot of different maths, some business analysis. The second class is actually business calculus. And so a student who takes college algebra will receive no credit, and they can't use it as an elective either. So I just want to make sure we're being very transparent with our students, that they don't, that we don't set them up for an expectation where they wasted their time, and in some cases, money in order to take that. So I, even though it may be part of the core curriculum.
So, even though it may be part of the core curriculum, I don't know who it counts for because it doesn't count for some of the major ones. And so, I want to make sure we're just being very, very clear with our students. I had a good conversation with Ms. Bonzer beforehand, is that we have students who take algebra in eighth grade who aren't really ready to take calculus as a senior here. And so, you don't want him to take a year off of math because it's like a foreign language. If you take a year off, you start to regress. But that college algebra class is not the right solution for a good number of students. Statistics would be better, and I see that's one we're offering. So, I just want to make sure we're being very, very careful with what we advise our students to do so they don't waste their time.
Yeah, and be very transparent about that with them. I agree.
I think that, I mean, Tammy, I completely agree with you, but I don't want anybody to waste any of their time either. But I wonder if that's something that can be addressed in the catalog in terms of a disclaimer that that course may not be transferable to certain, certain specific degree plans so that, and then with our counseling and guidance folks advising in terms of classes. Because the flip side is that there are students who won't necessarily go to one of the major universities or where that college credit could count at Collin College if they're working towards an associate's degree or certificate or something. And so, I don't want to preclude those students from taking, having this opportunity for a dual credit, but we do need to be communicating to our students that, you know, this is something that could be a risk if they take this.
I don't disagree, but I think it would be good to look at like these four or five major majors that people take and the four universities a lot of our kids go to. I mean, it's 20 plans. I've got three of them right here with me. And so, we can see, you know, what are the mathematics requirements? What is the freshman year for these students? And how can we come up with dual credit that checks off those boxes? And I would love to have that specific discussion at a work session because I hope that we can get more kids who have a freshman year already done and paid for. And they can choose to take the credit or not, but it gives them a great head start.
Absolutely. And that's something we would certainly want to work on from our, the counseling perspective to make sure they're prepared to talk with students about that as well. Okay, so, the next topic was, or the next course that we had discussed was Learning Frameworks. And that is, this is a course that's actually in the Psychology Department at Collin College. And it would transcript on the college transcript business psychology course. And I brought some notes up here because I figured they, their college, or their course catalog says it best. It's a study of the research and theory in the psychology of learning cognition and motivation and factors that impact learning. So, students have an opportunity to explore how they learn best and look at the challenges and strengths that are a part of their learning profile. And then, there are some very practical skills that they work on in this course, as in study habits, how to study effectively for a college exam, how to study on your own, which is what they're asked to do a lot more of in the college level. And then, they get into even more practical issues like how to approach a professor, how office hours work. So, Collin is using this as an introductory course for a lot of students so that they can see more success as they continue in their Collin College career. And we're excited about the possibility of this course because we feel like it'd be a wonderful beginning for our students to help prepare them for those remaining college courses that they take, so.
So, if I understand correctly, the general goal, the general direction of this course is towards education?
Correct.
The learning process.
Exactly.
When will this be available?
That would depend on your decision-making tonight, but we would, we'd love to see it be available to our 10th graders next year.
I have a student for you for next year.
Excellent. We'll make sure that's taken care of. But yeah, the idea would be that they could take this course as a supplement to a speech course that's in your information. And it would prepare them to be successful because we all remember that jump onto a college campus, and this really has been successful at Collin with adult students. So, we feel like it'd be a real benefit to our high school students as well. And it is a course that's being offered in a lot of area districts for that purpose, to prepare them to take on more challenge in dual credit.
So, I'll just note that for the first time, we'd be offering dual credit classes to ninth grade students, ninth and 10th grade students. Because in the past, not all of these, but the college algebra that we've been talking about, the Learning Framework and Speech would be available to lower grades, and that would be new for us. Who would be the instructor? Will it be our teachers who qualify?
Yes, the plan is for the new courses for to have Plano ISD staff teaching those.
Okay, so that's another new feature. So, Ms. Bonzer, can we make a note to look at when we have scheduled the additional dual credit conversation?
Yes.
I know we had planned to do that. Let's just, you know, circle back and figure out when on the agenda that's actually happening.
So, that Learning Framework is a one semester class, and the Speech is a one semester? Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
We'll get that on a work, upcoming work session and bring that back.
Okay. All right, so having, any other, do we have any other discussion, questions about this? All right, so, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
So, move? Okay, I guess you didn't say the motion.
Well, I'm giving flexibility.
I'll move to adopt the, let's see, I don't have the item.
Would you like to adopt the item as presented?
I'll move to approve the following new courses with the list of all the courses in that recommendation, as recommended by the administration. How's that?
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Item, new item 8C, which used to be 7K, is related to TEA Individual Student Waiver Request for Attendance. Yorn, did you pull that one? Do you want to open that with a few comments?
Yes, actually, a question. It's, I'm not concerned about the request for waiver. I just read in the description something about the Reggie Robot, Robot Program, and it sounds intriguing. I was wondering if we can hear something about it and how available it is to all of our students, if you can tell us something about it.
This program-
Susan, it's not, not on. Mic not on. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. This program comes to us out of Region 10, and they have, I don't know what you call a group of robots, a staple of robots, a, but they have a number of robots that are available for the purpose of allowing students to really attend classes via video conferencing when they're recovering either from a long-term illness or some other factor that prevents them from attending school. And the student is actually able to, from their home or hospital, drive the robot so it attends class, has like an eye, like a screen that the students face either can appear or that can be blocked, but then the student is able to not only see what's happening and hear what's happening, but actually interact as if they were in class. And so, typically, this is used for students, like in this particular case, a student was going to be in a medical study with a, for a period of time. They would not be out long enough to qualify for homebound services. And so, they're, were able to make a request through Region 10 to access one of these robots.
So, right now, we have a robot walking around?
It's actually, this has already passed, but yes, we did.
Okay.
I know of at least one other situation at one of our high schools where we accessed this last year as well.
And staircases, do they cause any problems?
I'm sure it doesn't do stairs, probably the elevator.
Elevator pass.
Yeah. And it does need, even though the student can steer it, you know, obviously, it doesn't open doors or, so it needs some staff guidance throughout the day, but it's, it's a really neat step in technology.
It sounds like it. That was all my questions.
Okay, any other?
Well, I think, Susan, I think that this is definitely a forward movement of innovation, and the Reggie Robot Program is excellent. Thank you for working on it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the TEA Individual Student Waiver Request for Attendance as presented?
I'll move to approve the waiver as presented.
And do we have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are now on to item nine, Reports. The first report, item A, is the 2017 Texas Academic Performance Report, also called Tapper, and Public Hearing. No action is required, and the public will be invited to comment following the report. I invite Dr. Dash Worsing, our Senior Executive Director of Assessment, Research, and Program Evaluation, who will provide the annual Texas Academic Performance Reports.
Thank you. Thank you for spending and the prestis. As required by Texas Education Code, once the TEA releases that Texas Academic Performance Report, that's what TAPIR stands for, within 90 days, we are required to have, present a report to the school board and as an open hearing. The, there are three main identifications or classifications that are released with the TAPIR report. One is the Special Ed Determination Status. And this is a collection of Special Ed indicators collected through another accountability system called Performance-Based Monitoring. And this is a, there are about 90 indicators here for multiple years, and based on the levels of performance on their, the TEA releases Special Ed Determination Status. So, it's released only for the district, at the district level, and Plano ISD meets a requirement on this PBMS for Special Ed Determination Status. The other identification is the accreditation status. And this is, there are two processes here. One is assessment, and one is finance. Assessment is on data validation and accuracy and submission of data. It's mostly, it's not performance-related, it is compliance-related. And also, compliance-related actions related to finance, whether reports were submitted on time and, and like annual reports, releases, and so on. So, they release, there are four determinations, and Plano, this is the highest determination, is accredited status on, on finance and data validation. The one that we're most familiar with is the state rating. Obviously, the district met the standard, which is met and not met is the only determination here. And out of our 71 campuses, including the early childhood campuses, 70 of our campuses met, met the standard. In case of early childhood, well, how do you determine the state rating on performance on early childhood? They don't have any statewide assessment data. We are required to pair each of the early childhood campuses with a campus that has grades three or higher. So, and also, we have the option to pair each of the early childhood campuses with the district. We paired our early childhood campuses because they don't have a strict feeder pattern with the district rating. So, so they inherit the district rating of the, for early childhoods.
Dash, which one did not meet standard?
That'll be Meadows Elementary.
Dash, can I ask you, what process or actions are we taking to help Meadows Elementary School?
Well, they are, they are, well, as an improvement required campus, we, we are following the state guidelines plus additional interventions with that campus. One of the primary things is we hired a professional service provider as required by the state. So, it's a consultant recommended by Region 10 that works with the principal, and they work, they're almost like, as an advisor, as a consultant to the principal to implement all the plans. Through curriculum and campus services, we provided additional training for teachers, for specialists, and the administrators through a very rigorous process. We were very, as at the district level, we went, we analyzed all their data at the beginning of the school year, in fact, even before the, before school started. And we went through a deep process of campus improvement planning, where we identified problem statements, tied them to new courses. We, every teacher at the school was involved in this process, so to kind of do a multi-year data analysis to come up with the improvement action. Now, that action is in implementation right now. In fact, we, Curriculum Department has weekly visits with the curriculum instructional staff, planning with the students, with the teachers on all the lessons and the units. We are also having classroom observations driven by the campus administrators as well as the district curriculum staff. They do observation through the teachers to see whether that implementation is happening. So, there is quite a higher level of help and guidance and intervention is going on with Meadows right now.
Great. I'm glad that we're doing as much as we can for Meadows Elementary School. Great job.
In fact, I spent my four hours this morning at Meadows, kind of checking up the status of what the campus improvement planning is with our professional service provider and also a Region 10 representative for Meadows this morning, and they were pretty happy where we are. We are about three months ahead of the TEA timeline on implementing the required timeline for improvement required campuses. So, now, in the performance reports, I know we had about three, we had a workshop, a board, at the board workshop, and also had two additional board meetings. We went through very deeply, school by school, on our accountability ratings. Just to, just to give a quick recap, in the major portion of the TAPIR report, this slide kind of says what is involved in the process, so, and what data drives it. So, it is star three through eight, and of course, which is also star, and all the graduation data, that is SAT, ACT, AP, they are all tied to the 2016 graduating class. So, the denominator is a graduating class, or in some few cases, it is 11th and 12th grade only. So, these are all the kind of the performance metrics that go into the system. And we've seen this before. This is what determines the TAPIR's academic accreditation rating. This is at the district level. The benchmark for index one is 60. For index two, student progress is 22. We had 42 as a district. For index three, closing performance gaps, which is economically disadvantaged, and at the district level, African-American and Hispanic students only. So, that's, we had 43 on that index, where the district is 20, standard is 28. And post-secondary index for elementary, that is star performance at a higher standard. It's not just what we call passing, they had to meet the college readiness standard. And for campuses that have a graduating class, this includes graduation rate and also dropout The, in addition to the accountability rating itself, there are distinctions that can be earned by campuses. And this is a summary of how our, where our campuses are. So, for example, at elementary, they can earn all by the social studies distinction because, so we don't have social studies assessment, and the star assessment for elementary, we only have it in eighth grade, and US history for 11th graders. So, out of these, 12 elementaries earned the English Language Arts distinction. And how they earn this distinction is each campus is paired against 40 similar campuses across the state, similar in size, similar in percentage of economically disadvantaged students, percentage of ELL, English Language Learners, percentage of Special Ed students, and percentage of students who are classified as mobile. So, they use these categories to pair each campus with 40 comparison camp- So they use these categories to pair each campus with forty comparison campuses. And in English Language Arts, for example, there are about five measures goes in, depending on the school level, and each of those, and at elementary level, half those measures has to be in the top twenty-five percent. So if there are forty schools, that each of those measures has to come in the top ten. The appendix to this report lists each of the individual measures that are involved in each of the indicators by level. They are different from elementary to middle school and to high school. So for example, this regular passing is not an indicator, like passing star, what we know as. In order to be counted here, it needs to be percentage of students who reach the advanced level on star. So it is a performance level that is required a lot higher than just passing. It's a very rigorous standard, and half of our elementary schools are more than half, got at least one distinction. Middle schools, ten out of the thirteen, got at least one. All our high schools, including the academy, got all this, at least one distinction, and for example, all the high schools and the academy got the English Language Arts distinction. Our senior highs got most of the distinctions, but I cannot put an asterisk there with the zero. There are some challenges because of our senior high structure. They get grouped with nine, twelve high schools. So there are, for example, progress is, almost cannot be measured for our senior highs because progress is mainly math to Algebra I and English I to English II measure. And we have very, very few kids who are kind of out of sequence that takes that test in, at senior high level. So that's that little asterisk there, because, you know, there are a lot of pluses for senior highs, but you know, when it comes to indicators like this, it just, it can't necessarily help us.
Is that because most of the students do that at the high school level?
At the high school levels. And so a kid, a student that will take English I, English II in eleventh grade, most likely, you know, the kid came in, lacked English I credit or II credit, and we gave that kid, so kind of off-track students. One of the other big parts that goes in mostly for domain, for index four, the college readiness portion, is SAT and ACT performance. Why it's getting cut off, okay. And this is, this measure is, we get credit for participation as well as, as performance, and performance is defined for college readiness as in the SAT reading and, or ACT combined score in reading and math, had to be eleven hundred or a composite of twenty-four. And I, so I put in there by subgroup, because each of those subgroups count the same, so for example, because they are weighted equally. And the last column there is the state. So for example, Plano ISD, seventy-six percent of the students have an SAT or an ACT score based on the 2016 graduating class. Statewide, that number is seventy-two, but the percentage that met the college-ready standard for Plano is sixty-one percent compared to twenty-three percent statewide. And one of the other indicators that goes in is APIB performance and participation. So this is also done by student group, as well as all students. So this measure is applicable for the district, so these are the district numbers. You also have, this measure also applies to all the three senior highs, and the academy too, but academy doesn't offer APIB, so they, it's not in the course offering. One last thing that we are required to present and report is the performance of our graduates in Texas Public Higher Ed. This is one of the few reports that's produced that directly ties GPA to high school graduates. For example, so, and it is, it is a year behind, so we had three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two graduates in that class, and they track through the Higher Education, Higher Education Coordinating Board, how, what the GPA of these students are, in four-year and five-year. So, so for example, so two thousand three hundred and ninety-four kids went to a four or a two-year college, and that's about sixty-two percent of our graduating class, and out of that, fifty-one percent earned a three-point higher GPA, three points or higher, in their freshman year. So that's what this report, so if you add those numbers up, there are about fifty-one percent of the kids got a three or higher, three, B or, B or higher, A or B. Now, we don't, they can't track every kid. Hundred and twenty-four kids went to independent colleges and universities, then there are certain, even if they went to a Texas college, we have tracking issues. For example, when you enroll in college, a social security number is almost a must. But when we enroll in K-12, we really, they don't need to provide us a social security number. If the student, the parents don't provide us one with one, we provide them with a state ID, you know, unique state ID across the state. And how they match these, our graduates to, to higher ed, they use that ID, they use the date of birth, and they use the first name and the last name. So all those four things have to match up in order to get this report right. So two hundred and fifty-two of these students, there were, we didn't have the state ID, and there are another one thousand kids that they couldn't find. Now, we know about maybe close to a third of our kids went out of state universities, so that kind of accounts for that thousand kids. So, in addition to the TAPIR report, you know, this is, in one sense, this is, there are literally thousands of numbers in this report. There's bilingual and English language program participation is there, special ed participation, class size information, and student information by grade, by subject, and in the secondary by core areas. Staff information is there, student to class, class sizes. Tax information is linked into this report at the very, if you go into the report itself, there's a link on the very last page that takes you to the finance side of per people funding, and per people recapture amount is there, things like that in that report, and the fund balance and revenue and expenditure information. We are also required to inform to the public what our safety and security and violent incidences, so these are the locations that links, in the report takes to the Safety and Security Department, where we have the process on how we guarantee safety for our students. The disciplinary referrals, the state require disciplinary referrals by campus are available on the second link, and each of the campus and the district improvement plans are also available on the, in the district website on the third link. So they are, by, as we, it's one of the required components at the TAPIR report to make all those reports public. So that's the formal report, and the public hearing starts.
Thank you, Dr. Wirsinger.
Can I make just one quick comment? I just want to ask the board, the rest of the board, if you think it would be instructive for us to get a year-over-year comparison of these results, so we can see if there are trends? I think it would.
I was thinking the same thing. I think so, and you really have to deconstruct it and look at the school level. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Not tonight. I was about to give you tickets.
All right. Thank you. The board will now open the public hearing about the district's TAPIR report. I welcome any audience members to speak at this time. If you choose to speak, please do so at the front center podium in this room, which would be over to my right.
It's no longer the center.
With no one wishing to speak, I will now close the public hearing. Continuing on our Reports section, I will move to item B, Post-Secondary Readiness. Our next report about post-secondary readiness and experience will be introduced by Susan Modicet, Ms. Modicet.
Thank you, President Bender. I'd like to invite Jana Hancock back up to the podium, and Jana will kick off this presentation, and then she'll be followed by Teresa Biggs.
Good evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight about all the wonderful accomplishments from the class of 2017, actually, and a lot of exciting things to report to you this evening. So we'll begin with the universities that the PISD class of 2017 is attending in the greatest numbers. This is based on student reporting. The University of Texas at Dallas remains the most attended university by our graduates, and you can see the numbers there on the slide indicate how many of our students actually are attending there this year. Okay, the next slide shows you our out-of-state schools in the greatest numbers attended by our graduates. You can see the University of Arkansas has been our top feeder for a couple of years. Oklahoma State is still up there. So lots of, lots of regional schools, but you can see we do have students as far away as Colorado, Arizona State, so they really are exploring a lot of different options across the nation and taking advantage of those opportunities. The next slide shows you the representation of our PISD students at the top twenty research colleges in the country. This is determined each year by U.S. News and World Report, and based on their rankings. Our 2017 graduates are currently attending nineteen of the top twenty colleges on this year's list. This list represents students that are matriculating at these colleges. There were actually three hundred and sixty-nine acceptances to these universities from the class of 2017, and seventy of our students are currently attending one of them. Specifically from the Ivy League, PISD students had a hundred and twenty acceptances, and twenty-two are attending those Ivy League colleges.
I'm sorry, what was that number again, for the Ivies?
The Ivies, we had a hundred and twenty acceptances, and twenty-two are attending.
How do these numbers compare to other good school districts? I use it as an example, we've got about seventy kids, that's about two percent of our population. I think a whole lot more than that should be accepted at these wonderful places, and so how does that two percent compare to, say, Highland Park or South Lake or Cappell?
That's something I'd be happy to explore for you and get that information to you. I don't have that information right now.
I do think that our large high school, our split high school, actually disadvantages our kids at times, because there are only three high schools here, and so I think the universities sort of moderate how many they select from each high school, not necessarily from each district.
Well, I'll be happy to look into that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next slide shows you the acceptances from the class of 2017 to our military academies, and we, I'm sorry, these are the students that are matriculating at the military academies, one at West Point and one at the Merchant Marine Academy. We did have nine students that were accepted into military academies this year. Okay, and next we'll look at our International Baccalaureate Program. It's important to note that in the U.S., sixty-eight percent of IB candidates complete the program successfully and earn diplomas. In Plano ISD, eighty-one percent of our 2017 IB diploma candidates earned their diplomas well above the national average, and this percentage is consistent with our averages over the last five years. And now we'll look a little more closely at dual enrollment participation. There was an increase of nearly three hundred students taking one or more dual-credit courses during the 2016-17 school year. There are currently thirteen hundred and thirty-six students enrolled in academic dual-credit courses this semester, which represents an additional three hundred students participating during the current school year, which is very exciting. The blue bars there indicate the number of students enrolled in Health Science Academy in academic courses. And then, I thought that it would be interesting for us to begin tracking the actual number of courses, because as I mentioned, the previous slide shows you how many students are involved. This slide will show you how many courses they're involved in. In order to compare in a more accurate way, we're looking at fall of 2016 compared to fall of 2017, and you can see, currently, our students are involved in twenty-six hundred and one courses. Or I'm sorry, that was during this 2016-17 school year. For the current semester, sixteen hundred and nine courses are underway, so we're expecting over three thousand courses to be completed by our students this school year. And now on to ACT. The number of students taking the ACT during the 2016-17 school year decreased slightly. However, the total number of students taking either the SAT or the ACT remained relatively stable. So there's just a little bit of a shift over to the SAT this year, this past year. And then on to our ACT scores, they've also remained stable over the past five years, and Plano ISD students, as you can see here, continue to score above state and national averages in all content areas. This next slide shows you how our students fare in regards to being ready for college-level work, or those college-ready benchmarks that ACT discusses. The chart shows that the percentage of students that took the ACT and are prepared to be successful in college courses in four subjects areas, so it'll show you that percentage for English or a beginning composition class in college, algebra, social sciences, and biology, and then the last little graph shows you the percentage of our students that were proven to be college-ready in all four areas. So again, we're really proud that they score well above our state and national averages. And then on to PSAT scores. The next, this slide will show you how our students' scores on the PSAT compare to students across the state and across the nation, and again, our students in both the tenth and eleventh grade groups outperformed other groups in the state and nation again this And this is information I'm excited to share about the class of 2017. They had a hundred and nineteen students that were named National Merit Finalists, which was an increase of forty-three over the previous year, so great opportunities for those students as they have begun college this year. And then SAT participation. As I mentioned earlier, we saw an increase in the number of students taking the SAT this year, and again, when you combine the SAT and ACT totals, it's very stable. Okay, and on to SAT scores. They also have remained above state and national averages in all three subsections. As you know, and as we discussed last year, the writing portion of the exam is now optional, and the scoring range has changed from an eight-hundred-point scale to a forty-point scale. So for the purposes of comparison, the writing score shown on this chart was converted from the new forty-point scale to the previous eight-hundred-point scale. Our actual writing score for this year was thirty out of forty points, and that would include those students who opted to take the writing.
I think it's interesting that we had a big jump in SAT takers as well as score.
And you know, I'm not, I can't speak to the true reason for that, but I think it may be there was a lot of discussion about the revised SAT, and, you know, maybe that publicity was a part of it. So, and the word was out that it was more correlated to their curriculum, as the ACT has been for a long time, so that may have influenced more students to switch back over to the SAT. And the other issue is that the writing became optional, where they always have had that option with the ACT. So for those students who didn't need it for their college admissions and didn't want to sit for a writing test, had that option with ACT, but this year, they had the option with either one. So trying to get into their minds, I'm thinking that may be part of the reason for the increase.
Yeah, well, and I guess where I was really going with that is as you add more people to the mix, you get closer to the average, whereas our scores increased, yeah, notwithstanding the significantly more students taking it.
I've seen that trend over the last few years as well. I remember previous reports like this, we're in the same trend.
That's good.
Okay, and speaking of scores, that is the subject of our next slide. The scores for our PISD students increased across the board. And I did want to mention that that's also true of state and national averages this year. And you may have read about that a little bit in the news, but the scores on the revised test were a little higher. So wanted to make sure you're aware of that. All right, then on to AP participation. And I think due in large part to the work that Teresa Biggs and her group are doing and the work that we're doing on campus with Commitment to Equity is responsible for the increase that we've seen in students participating in AP courses and taking AP exams. So you can see we've got an increase in our senior highs of 171 students. And then the next slide shows you our high school participation. We had an increase there of nearly 200 students.
So I think Tammy, this is a point that you've made quite often about participation there, but we had increased participation both in AP and dual credit, which I know has been a big push for the district. I think that shows the success of what y'all have been doing.
Okay, and this slide shows you the number of exams administered in grades nine through 12. And it's always a daunting number to me to think that we administered 14,348 exams last May. So that's something to be proud of, an increase of over 1,100 exams. And then the question we always ask when we're increasing in student participation and exams given is what the scores were. And we're pleased to report to you that that has remained stable at 81%, even as those numbers of students and exams increased. And I wanted to point out also that those percentages for the state and nation were 46% and 59% respectively. So our students continue to perform very well on those AP exams. And if there are no questions about those slides, I'll turn it over to Teresa Biggs.
So this slide you have in front of you is, this actually gives you the actual number of students at the three senior highs. So we're just focusing on the 11th and 12th grade students. And you'll see the enrollment, the total enrollment at Plano West, Plano Senior, and then Plano East. And that second column will tell you the number of current underrepresented students that are participating in AP to date. And then the last one, the last column would be in order to achieve full equity at each one of those campuses in a perfect world, that would be the number of kids that we would need to find to have equity at all three of those campuses.
Teresa?
Yes.
How would the underrepresented number in this column compare to a previous year? Do we know that?
I don't have the, here's where it gets tricky, is as the enrollment number of the campus shifts, then the number of kids that are underrepresented shifts. I have that data broken out that I could get to you, but because it's always in flux based on enrollment of the campus, it's not as clean as I would like it to be to share with you here, but I can certainly get that to you. But I can tell you we're moving in the right direction. The needle's definitely moving in the right direction. Then I wanted to take a couple of minutes to explain to you what's going on through the whole continuum around the equity work. And you may remember that last year Capital One funded a day where we took 100 students from middle school, Otto, Armstrong, and Bowman. And we spent a day with those students, did kind of an AP boot camp, talked about the benefit of the courses, what kinds of skills they would need to be successful. Then we tracked with the help of Mark Allen, we tracked these numbers. And out of that 100 students that we took, 19.5% of them are currently taking AP class, 37.9% are taking both an honors and a pre-AP, and then 57.5% are taking an AP course or an honors course. So we're greatly encouraged by that. And we'd really like to see that day, whether it happens at Capital One or not, that we replicate that day for more middle schools and capture those kids earlier, because we firmly believe that middle school, those honors courses, getting those kids and moving them into ninth grade, that's the gateway to really pushing these kids into accelerated courses.
Say those middle schools again, please.
It was Bowman, Armstrong, and Otto. And that was based on Capital One's request. They had a very specific task that they were, they had to choose campuses from the east side of town, and that's why we went there. Then the district support continues. The Heart of the Scholar, we started that three years ago, and that's been our, kind of our key training, a full-day training with staff, where we talk about really shifting mindsets, not only of staff, but of students as well. And that continues to be highly successful. We've just finished our 14th offering of that. And we have well over 300 staff members that have gone through it. It's primarily teachers of advanced courses, but this year we brought in middle school honors course teachers. We've also had counselors, all of our counselors have been through it, and we've had administrators, principals, as they're able to, to attend as well. And we see that, we don't see an end to this course. It's been really successful, so we see that as being part of our culture now. And our next step is actually going to be called the Heart of the Scholar Next Steps. And we are going to invite these people that have been through the Heart of the Scholar to come back. And we're developing a training that's more specific to instruction, not so much about mindset, and now we're ready to move into the next step. But in the meantime, and in addition to, I listed just some, the names of some of the instructional, short, one and a half hour courses that we're offering to teachers after school, to really dig down on instructional strategies and strategies and expanding their toolbox so they can reach a greater number of students. Then we've also expanded our equity outreach teams. We've had equity outreach teams at the senior highs, and we've had them at the high schools. And this year we brought on middle schools. And we had three different days where we had vertical alignment with each feeder pattern. And we had all of the equity outreach teams come together, talk about what is the challenge specific to their feeder in the morning, then really drill down on what is the unique need on each campus. That I see as something that we would do every year as well. And then we follow it up with those teams in December to see where they are, what support do they need from the district, how can we help them move their work forward. Then Supporting Plano Scholars, that's our AP boot camp for students. And campuses have taken that and they're implementing it in different ways at different campuses. Williams did a boot camp before school. Jasper built it into the first few days of their school year, so it's being used differently. And then Campus Created Supports, that changes from campus to campus. But such things as the middle schools, I'm sorry, the 910s double-blocking their lunches to allow all students to attend tutorials, even those that struggle with transportation, we can reach those kids. And really, really drilling down on building relationships and making connections with those kids in different ways. So there's a lot of really nice campus work going on. Then elementary, finally, because of the board who allowed us to return full-time pay specialists to our low-enrollment campuses, that's been such a blessing. So now these teachers, we've expanded their roles, they're not only serving the gifted kids, but they're pulling out advanced academic enrichment groups for students that may not ever need gifted services, although they might. But what we're doing is trying to change the elementary students' mindset and let them see that they can do these honors courses in middle school and help develop the strategies and the thinking that will make them successful in middle school, and then that would carry on into upper secondary.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Who serves on the equity outreach team?
We ask that there is at least one administrator, one counselor, and teacher representatives that teach advanced courses. They can be as small or as large as they like. We're definitely trying to turn them into Johnny Appleseeds. And so the more, the larger the committee, the better, as far as I'm concerned, and let them go back to the campuses and keep spreading the message and helping turn campuses.
Teresa, was there an effort to also create parent classes?
We had parent nights. So for, we focused on that middle school group, we started there, and we had three different parent nights last semester. And some were better attended than others. And then this year we offered one now that the students are underway, and we offered a parent night for those parents. I think the timing was off. It was December 5th, so we didn't give very many people at all. I think that was something that should have happened earlier in the semester, so that's a lesson learned for the future. But we are going to offer another one again in the spring and time it so it's better for parents.
Do you have a feel for, of the students that were identified that were underrepresented and they took the opportunity to enroll?
Right.
What's our retention rate of that group? Do we know that?
I don't know the number for the middle school, but I can tell you that district-wide, the last year's numbers were very encouraging. The retention rate was 4%, which is even equal opportunity schools, the group that's working with us were stunned. I mean, it was really nice. So we held 4% last year. And I can't tell you about the middle schools this year.
What does 4% mean?
It means we only had 4% of our students say.
Okay, all right, so it was a 96%.
I'm so sorry, yes. Thank you for that correction. No, I would not be up here all happy and glowing. No, it was a 96%.
Like, wow, 4%.
Yeah. You must have been wondering why I looked so smiley about that. No, you're right, 96% retention rate, 4% attrition.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, but I just want to make a comment, Teresa. I think that we are definitely doing, these trends are very good, and you're doing a really good job. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for that report. All right, Item C is our budget calendar and goals for the 2018-19 school year. Randy McDowell, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, will present the budget calendar and goals related to the 18-19 budget. Mr. McDowell.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, President Bender. So tonight is the official kickoff of the 2018-2019 budget process, and we would like to share with you the budget calendar and goals. And so we are in December, and again, looking at the calendar and goals. In January, we will be coming back and bringing you some assumptions that we'll be basing the budget on, and also some preliminary estimates, those will primarily be on revenues. It's not a legislative session year, and so we know what the formulas are, and so we'll be able to get pretty close on that. The big variable is going to be the projection and property values. And so so much is going to be driven off of the percentage that we assign to that, and so we'll talk more about that in January. In February, we'll bring you a lot of analytical information. We'll be looking at some peer review of some other districts, the text education performance reporting comparisons, some district trends over multiple years. And then we may even look at using a program called Forecast 5, which gives us even better analytics when we compare to other school districts. In March, we'll be bringing you a compensation review. Prior to that, we will bring in TASP to do the salary study, and we'll also be bringing you some staffing information. April, we'll be bringing you the departmental budgets, and then also the other funds of debt service and FANS or the food and nutritional service budget. And so those are the other two budgets that, of course, the board has to adopt. In May, we'll be bringing you more detailed information as far as a budget summary, hoping that we'll be ready to actually adopt the compensation plan, and at that time authorize advertisement of the public hearing of the notice that will go on the paper. June, we'll be back for the public hearing on the budget and proposed tax rate, and also bring you the final budget for adoption at that time. And then come back in September and adopt the tax rate. So that's a very similar timeline to what the district has experienced in the past. Any questions on the calendar? Okay, then if we look at budget goals, these are somewhat similar to the budget goals that you had for 2017-18. These were worked on by Cabinet and Administration, and of course, they're flexible if you would like to make some amendments to these. The goals that Cabinet came up with, of course, is a balanced budget and also maintaining adequate fund balance, that hasn't been an issue. Continue to maintain teacher-staffing ratios, and that's not making classes larger, but not necessarily making them smaller either, so maintaining a system very similar to what we currently have. Analyzing through the salary compensation study and being sure that we maintain competitive salary and benefits with our peer districts. Strategically target additional resources to high-need students to meet district initiatives. So a lot of that could be in special populations, performance, a lot of what you saw tonight. Continue focus on efficiencies. One thing that always pops in mind there is utilities, but there's many other areas that we can look at there, whether it's what we purchase, how we purchase, contracts, different items there that we'll be focusing on. And then also the goal of use of fund balance for expenditures that enhance facilities, furniture, equipment, and to address board goals. And so this is a new one that we came up with. I know that we have, we did put money away in fund balance the past fiscal year, and so this is really the one that encompasses what our other needs are and how maybe we can use some of that to better the district. It may be some things that weren't included in the bond, it may be some furniture, technology. We have some campuses that do have some needs that were not part of the bond that we'd like to bring to you and see what ideas you have there.
Randy, I would interject that I'm not personally enthusiastic about using fund balance for furniture and equipment at facilities, because we have other funding options for those, bond monies. I want to ensure that we're really helping our high-need campuses. We talked about Meadows earlier. The principal at Meadows is new. Now that she's been in the job for a few months, she might say, wow, a couple extra staff members might be really helpful. So I want to make sure as a board we finally have that discussion about where are we going to use that fund balance strategically to try to really jumpstart some of these campuses. I know that conversation will also go along when we have the March staffing discussion, and then we have the April discussion of departmental budgets. But I really hope this is the year that we get really serious about putting money behind those special needs. So we won't have another campus that's IR, we won't have other campuses that, you know, I'm not particularly proud of, and it's not their fault, they need resources.
Yeah, I'd like to have this conversation actually sooner rather than later, because this is something that's been an issue for me as well. And to your point, you know, let's have a January, February timeframe, if possible, if we can get that into the work session calendar, so that we can have, we can understand what we're looking at as we go into the budgeting season for next year, because our fund balance is rather large.
Yeah, I think we also have to have caution, though, with the fund balance, because it can't be always a recurring item. So I imagine that's why you had facilities in there, because that's a one-timer.
Yeah.
But it's hard to put a recurring item out of fund balance.
I totally agree. And I think part of, when we had this conversation, what I'd ask is Randy, you know, to tell us what, one, is an adequate fund balance, and then, two, you know, I know that we've in the past kept a little bit more in, relative to Robin Hood payments that were upcoming. And so the reasoning behind, you know, let's, let us understand the reasoning behind what we have there, and then determine whether or not that's, can be better deployed elsewhere.
So I'm looking at the calendar, and what I'm hearing is all related to priority. And we have, you know, some priorities outlined here, but I'm hearing you say you'd like a little more conversation about the priorities. So in advance of arriving at April with departmental budgets, you know, kind of firmed up, if you will, maybe we could have some of that, maybe the cabinet could have some conversation about what priorities, I mean, this is the year to ask. Ask for what you want. We've had that conversation already. I said, be ready, because the board is going to say, tell me what you want, tell me what you need now. So if you guys maybe could have that conversation, and then we can schedule a time to, early in the season, kind of outline what the priorities more detailed are, like, give us your big asks. I know you haven't done the detailed planning, but maybe you can have some kind of big wishes, and then let the board weigh in on those priorities to help you build your budgets so that we're not backtracking.
True.
And trying to add stuff later. Would that be reasonable? Is that reasonable to you guys?
So that would have to be before March?
It would have to be early. Because January, we're talking about assumptions and preliminary estimates. I don't know if you can have it done by January, but have to be January, February.
And honestly, I think February.
Other than the 12 special call meetings we have scheduled.
That's our problem.
And I want to emphasize that asking for help is not a sign of weakness. Too long in this district, I think principals were judged negatively if they asked for help, and kids suffered because of it. Asking for help is a sign of being smart, and so I hope that we can move forward in that regard. And even if these are recurring expenses and we spend the fund balance on it now, we need to learn. and we spend the fund balance on it now, we need to learn what works, so we can have campuses that we're all proud of, so that we can have a campus that we would put our children in across this district without having to say, oh, I need to avoid this campus, or I need to avoid that feeder pattern. That's a blot on this district, and it's going to take money to fix some of it.
Well, and just for the board's information, on this year's campus improvement planning processes, we talked about creating a system for principals to ask for additional resources in order to implement their plans for improvement, and we have been collecting all of their requests and are in the process of considering the requests and granting.
Good.
So that, that process is in place, and I know Dr. Brockman has been working very hard on looking at equity in our staffing and resource allocation across the district. And so I know that's been an ongoing conversation as well of, you know, where is the equity and are we there, depending on the needs of the particular campuses. And so she's been doing some deep, deep analysis of that, and so that'll drive some of the next conversations that we have as well.
Great, thank you.
I want to add two items to the goals, the list of goals, Randy. One of them, to your bullet number five, continue focus on effi, on efficiencies, I'd like to add, and innovation. I think that being an innovative district, especially since we're designated a district of innovation, is going to be important. There is one bullet that I would like to add in general, and that is a long-term commitment to reduce our level of debt.
Okay, thank you for those thoughts.
Is the board agreeable with these suggestions?
I guess I'm a little puzzled about the debt, because right now we are aggressively paying off, as we have the opportunity to, in essence, refinance. I don't know if there's other action we would need to take, and I wouldn't want to preclude future bond initiatives as the need arises, so I'm not certain what that would look like.
That's why, why I use the word long-term. So over the long-term, and I, I asked that of Steve right before we started working on our 2016 bond, that we have some kind of a long-term plan that would show how we, overall, over a long period of time, doesn't have to happen in the next four or five years, but we reduce our level of debt. So when we take a new bond, whenever we issue a new bond, we have a framework that says, this is how much we should be taking. Let's not take more than that, let's find how we deal with that. So I don't, I don't want us to get to a point where, I remember when I joined the board, we were, we owed $853 million. I know that right now we owe more, but the, the worst part was that we were paying $70 million a year in principal and $40 million in interest, $40 million a year in interest. So the less debt we have, obviously, we pay less in interest, and even though you collect the same amount in INS taxes, you spend more of it on real projects, and instead of paying interest. And right now, we're enjoying very low interest rate, but that's going to change. So what, what I like is just an overall, long-term commitment to reduce the level of debt, so we pay less interest.
I just think about Williams High School that needs a 40 to 50 to maybe 60 million-dollar renovation, the future bond, and so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get implosion. I wouldn't want to say that I wouldn't serve children, because we have what might be an artificial limitation. I look at neighboring districts who've kept their, their bond rate low, and their kids are going to school with mold and rats, and I would never want that to be Plano.
Me neither. The, the way I look at it is, I would like, when we collect the 26.9 cents, I would like to spend most of it on fixing that instead of paying interest.
I thought, I thought we took a step toward that in the last program.
We did.
So I'm not sure...
I want us to have, and again, this is, my statement here is not reduce the debt by so, so and so percentage. What I'd like is that, as a board, we will have a commitment, a long-term commitment to reduce the level of debt.
I'm not sure how the, where that's best to manifest itself. Is it in the annual plan, or is it in some other category?
You know, when I look at the goals, what is the purpose of the goals? When we look at a proposed budget, departmentalized or any other way, when we looked at the budget, we will look at, again, at the goals and ask ourselves, does this budget meet those goals? I would like one of those goals to be that, over the long term, we reduce our debt. We don't do something that would actually increase our debt.
I don't think that's a budget issue, though. This is a matter of issuing, issuing the bonds themselves, and then they're paid back pursuant to the issuance. So I don't necessarily think that, I, I mean, I think as a practical matter, that's what we have been focused on for the last five years, and refinancing bonds when we can, and issuing bonds, issuing the, going ahead and providing for the issuance of bonds at an extremely low rate, so we get that cash in and pay it back at a low rate. I, I don't know that that's a budget goal necessarily, as it is a, an overall...
Strategic plan.
Strategic fiscal goal that this board has historically had, so I, I mean, yeah, is this, that's not a budgeting issue, is it?
Well, I would think that would be more of an issue that we would look at when we did a refunding and looking at possibilities there, or a new issue. It's truly not something we would accomplish within the budget unless we get a refunding or restructuring opportunity. You can restructure when you refund, as you know, and so, so they could go hand-in-hand, but they may not, I guess.
Yes. And I, and I, look, I, I agree with you in principle. I mean, I, I think we need to be as fiscally responsible as possible, look for all of the opportunities we can to repay our debt in the, in the best, most efficient manner, but that's not a budget issue.
And, and I'm good, if it's not here, I just, there are debt, debt service items here in the, even in the plan. I just want to make sure that this is something that stays in front of us, and that we, at the strategic level, we keep that in mind. I, I hate paying interest. I hate paying interest. I would rather think about $40 million a year.
Certainly if they would let us directly fund without actually going through the infrastructure borrowing, then we wouldn't have to pay interest, but that's not something the state allows us to do, unfortunately.
Right, but, but the lower...
There's the whole industry around loaning us money.
Yeah, but the lower overall debt we have, the less we pay interest, the more, with the same amount of tax rate, the INS tax rate, we, we have more projects.
Hey, we got to keep all the Robinhood money, we wouldn't even have any debt.
Look, that's been a priority since before you were on the board. With this board, it's been a priority since before I was on the board. I think in, in this community, it is a priority to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And I think it's been, I think it's part of the fabric of the board itself.
Right.
Approach.
So I mean...
I can tell you, whenever I, whenever I was applying for this position, I looked at Plano's finances, I was extremely impressed with the structure of the debt service. It's structured better than any large district I've ever seen. And, and currently, you're paying about 20%, of your principal amount, you're paying about an, about an additional 20% in interest, which is a very low percentage if you were to look at other districts.
Yep.
So it has been a focus here of, of the board and, and prior administration.
Two years ago, it was close to 40.
40%?
Yep. 40 million over 110.
Okay, so are we concluded with this item?
Yes, so we appreciate your input, and, and that's why Ms. Bonds wanted to address board goals in there, so we appreciate your thoughts, and we will incorporate those in the presentations that we bring back to you in the spring.
Thank you, Randy. The next category of items on our agenda relates to policy, and closure is required here. Most of our regular meetings, we have policies on the agenda for the board's consideration. These policies have undergone prior review by the district's attorney and by each board member. I invite Carla Oliver to introduce the policy we have on the agenda this evening. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, President Bender. Policy EIC Local Academic Achievement in Regard to Class Ranking is presented for you for adoption under second reading, as you mentioned. This revision clarifies procedures related to high school coursework with associated weighted grade points students have taken prior to enrolling in the Plano Academy High School. When we first reviewed this policy, I'll just remind you, we had, there is a small edit that says, on page 290 of your agenda, but also two of three on the policy, that says, "Accept as Required by Law." That's one change. And then, please remember, there's a paragraph falling at the very end of the policy as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt on second reading?
I move to adopt policy EIC Local under second reading.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Okay. The last item on the agenda is the conclusion of our public comment session, and I will now convene the 15-minute public comment session on non-agenda topics. Please refer to the, the instructions that I gave previous, previously in the meeting. Each speaker has up to three minutes, and Ms. Humphrey, our secretary, will keep the timer. Ms. Oliver, do we have comment cards now for non-agenda items?
I have one card presented this evening. Pardon me. I've...
Can you repeat that? Your microphone was...
Yes, my voice is...
Brandon?
All, and if you would, I'll...
If you would say...
Your name addressed clearly for the board as well.
Check, check. And I, I will let you know when you have one minute remaining.
My name is Brandon Wall. I'm a Christian fellow. I actually changed my topic comment. It's more about mindfulness practices. I was a center of compassion, integrity, and secular ethics at, like, university on the Shalawan Project. The Shalawan Project was due to a Georgian state president, education, positive human development, and so he... They used things like C D C T, as well as other mindfulness exercises that are actually designed to improve and reduce our student. So, to me, the education system and penal system are one and the same. If someone does not learn the correct social norms, they're not educated correctly, and they react privately. They go to jail, and they have to be educated. However, oftentimes, they're not educated enough, or just walk away and sit in their time. Well, when it comes to children in school, I know I for one, I was one of those wrong children. I can't wait to get out. It was like jailbreak, but, you know, if we had mindfulness exercises, if we could teach kids, it's the positive, basic compassion area, they would possibly become more compassionate. And this is also available because it is a secular approach, rather than religious approach. Religions are important to our society, and we can practice that. I for one, embrace a secular ethics, that's why I'm Catholic, but when it comes to school district teaching ethics, I think it's important to use secular ethics, because, well, honestly, I don't really care if we teach religion or secular ethics. I just think that we need more people with compassion and recognize the dependency on all humanity, especially today's world. And thus, this would actually still, would be a precedent of not swaying children of the vote or the certain direction. We just teach them compassion, and plus, we increase their mindfulness, which, and while I was at CSIS, we said compassion, I mean, second...
One minute.
Thank you. While I was there, I did the article critique for, I wrote some article critique with other people, obviously. And from some of these peer-reviewed articles that I read, it showed that Tibetan monks, they grant things on their prefrontal cortex, their pyrofunction, they sway their mental, not kill somebody, or attack somebody, you know, was larger and more connected to the brain. So this stuff's likely improved through, and I was just interested, interested, if everybody interested in establishing mindfulness practices in elementary schools and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The one thing that I can do is refer you to staff, so I think there might be additional information that we have on this topic that we could share with him, with the staff. So someone will contact you after this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.